Of forty thousand dollars this year because we started collecting on July 1. It might be a wee bit more than that, but it's not going to be eighty thousand dollars. The board, so folks know who's who. So and I think everyone on the board, including the alternates, is on call tonight. So thank you all for joining. And I'm, I think it demonstrates, you know, how our enthusiasm to kind of get this right. So Sarah Gallagher, Nancy Wilson, Randy Hodges, Michael Howell, Anna Andrews Mills, Laurie Wood, Hans Sussman, Cody Toll, Jason Wells. And then Rebecca is our staff liaison and Nancy Fortune is our council liaison. Okay.
Just to let you know real quick, Mike, I got on to the real thing and it was recording. So I stopped it and then started it again. So we can save this one because this will be where the information is.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, so, you know, the application window for the tier two competitive grants actually opened on December 1 and it will remain open till 11:59 on January 31. Late applications will not be accepted. I mean, that's, that's just it. 11:59 is the close time. The month of February will be essentially reviewed, rating and developing the grant award recommendations. And it's expected that the checks will be actually issued by early April. Could be earlier, but we're setting the expectation that it's early April. Okay. So we're going to kind of dive into the application and the FAQs. And Sarah is going to run us through this bit. And this will be the meat of tonight's program. So Sarah, over to you.
Okay, I am pulling up screen sharing. Can you see that? Okay, so this is our website on the city. And here is the application for the tier two match grant. So we're going to click here. This brings you to a form that you can fill out. Here at the top, you can click here and you can download a PDF that has all of the questions in the application. So you can copy and paste those up, those questions into a Word document and work on it offline if you prefer to work that way. Otherwise, this application does have an auto save function that after you've filled out the fields or some of the fields, then when you navigate away from that, this webpage, it will auto save it on connecting it to your IP address so that if you log back in from the same IP address, it will have saved your entries into the form. So there are kind of two different ways to work on it in progress. There's also an additional link to the FAQs here on the application itself. So beginning of the application is all contact information for who is submitting the grant. Here we're looking at if this is a pass through or a fiscal sponsorship, which 501(c)(3) nonprofit in Manitou has agreed to partner with you. Coinciding with that, if there's a partnering organization, what is that EIN? Or if you're a nonprofit, what is your EIN? So this, this question of pass through and fiscal sponsorship really applies to organizations and individuals who are outside of Manitou Springs, who are interested in partnering with a nonprofit in Manitou to bring something here using this grant. Here we're looking at the, the name or the title of the project that is being proposed as well as the type of arts discipline involved. And then we have some budgetary questions. So how much you're requesting from, from the city? And when you're going to be spending those funds? So perhaps this is something like we're requesting a thousand dollars and we expect to spend it all in June. Or maybe that would be spread out over a number of months. Now, if, if the total for the project is more than what you're requesting from us, then we're interested in knowing what the total project is and the timeline for the entire project as well. And then finally, for the, for the budgetary questions, we'd like to know exactly how you want to spend the funding that you're requesting from us. So pretty simple line item info here. If you wanted to say for, you know, we use this example, staff, supplies, space use and to indicate how much of the funding is going to each different line item. Some information about you as an artist or your organization. So the background and the mission. And then this is really the second question here. Describe the program or project the grant will be used for. This is really your, your narrative where you explain to us what exactly you want to do with this funding. So, you know, this is really where we're looking for more like paragraph or several paragraphs of explanation. This next one, what impact are you hoping to have on the community? And how will you evaluate your success? We, we want to know how you see this having a positive effect on Manitou and its residents. And to, to hear an explanation of that. And how will you know that this project has been successful? What, what would you consider to be the barometer for success? If you're a nonprofit, summarizing major contributors and in kind contributions for the past two, last two years would go here. And then this last question on this page, how are the folks carrying out this program qualified and prepared to do so? So talking about experience, potential connectedness and the, the ability of the people involved to do this project. On this last page, we have items that you can upload. So the ones with stars are required by every applicant and the ones without stars are only necessary in certain circumstances. So for example, if you are a nonprofit or you're using a fiscal agent, you would upload your IRS determination letter here. We're asking for everyone who applies, even individual artists, to have an anti-discrimination statement that you include here. If it is a pass through, having a copy of a written MOU, a memorandum of understanding or written agreement with the nonprofit who's sponsoring you would go here. And then if you are an individual or a performance group or something of the like, this is the place where you would upload your, your credentials and information about your previous work. So resume, CV, samples of your work in the past that would give us a sense of your qualifications and ability to carry out what you have proposed. So you would upload the appropriate attachments as well as answering the questions and submit the form right here. Going along with that, remember at the beginning, there were the FAQs. You can also access the FAQs here from our homepage.
Yeah. Sarah? Yeah. Let's just kind of pause here and see if there's any, any questions about the actual application. And we should probably mention that the board will not see applications till the first of February. They're going to, they're going to go into the, the system that Sarah just described, but we're not going to be reviewing them until after the application window has closed.
Yeah, it's a good point.
So Natalie, did you have any comments or questions? This may be the first time you've seen it. I think you're on mute if you're talking. Marcia? Marcia Cook? Abeka? Nick, but that is different. Okay, I, I guess we've done a good job there. Here, I guess you could go on to the FAQs.
Okay, I'm, I'm open to questions. Yeah, so if we have any, that's fine.
Okay. One question here. Let me move this out of the way. Oh, go back to the application. Yeah. Okay, individual artists, presenters, performers. Let me move this. Attach your CV, resume, work samples. We should include a page that explains what samples are and, and how they can be submitted.
That should be in the FAQs.
Okay, if that's in the FAQs, that's great.
Okay, I'm. Okay, we'll go over to the FAQs.
Natalie has a question.
It might be FAQs though, so I should probably wait until after that.
Okay, there's a lot here and I'm, I'm not sure. Maybe if we just want to each take a moment to, to read. I don't know. It's, it's a lot for me to try to summarize. What do you think, Neil?
Well, I think that, that the opening part is, you know, generic. I don't think there's anything particular to how you complete your application. This is just kind of a background. So I think you could probably move down. So the eligibility would be where I'd probably start.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, so the eligibility criteria is that in order to qualify this grant, for this grant, you need to be a Manitou Springs citizen or a nonprofit. We do encourage proposals from, from individuals as well as organizations. Now entities, individuals and nonprofits outside of Manitou Springs can apply through a pass through a fiscal sponsorship in partnership with a Manitou Springs nonprofit. So if they can get an organization in Manitou to basically sponsor them to come to town, then we're open to that as well. Organizations need to have been in existence for at least two calendar years. And all the projects must directly interface with arts, cultural heritage within the city of Manitou Springs. So all projects will be implemented within Manitou Springs. Looking at the applications that.
I have a quick question before you go on.
Yes.
Is there a limit to how many, any art, how many artists a nonprofit could fiscally sponsor?
My understanding is that there is not. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to contribute to that question?
I would agree with them. It's up to the, up to the fiscal sponsor.
Yeah, I think I would say that it would be up to the fiscal sponsor, but I think the fiscal sponsor needs to clarify with their insurance company. If they're going to be taking on a group of individuals, you know, how many, does the insurance company have a limitation on that? That would be my only concern.
Thanks, Natalie. So this is a competitive process. The applications will be reviewed by the match board after the application window closes and it will be done utilizing a ratings matrix that Neil's going to briefly touch on after the FAQs. Our board will deliberate and make recommendations to city council regarding how we're going to distribute the money. Those award announcements will be made by mid-April is our goal. And so down here, under core ratings criteria, these are the items that we're really looking at. And I think Neil will touch on this as well. When we're, we'll be doing the rating is the completion of the application, that the budget is feasible, that promoting arts, culture and heritage as divine defined and plan Manitou is a primary component of the project that it positively impacts our town. And that there's the relative, the relevant experience and expertise to get the project done.
A quick question.
Yes.
Due to COVID, is there going to be some leniency around timelines? If things just happen to happen?
You mean if, if someone had a project they wanted to do in February and may have to now do it in August? Yeah, absolutely. I mean, that's, that's just being reasonable. Yeah. But I think, I think ideally we, it's not a, a hard kind of rule, but you kind of expect it to be within the calendar year as much as possible.
All right. So these, these items are really just kind of delving a little bit more into the rationale of why we're asking for what we're asking for in the application. I'm going to keep scrolling.
Wait. Question?
Yes.
Could you go back up a little bit? Project budget now up. On the disciplines, yes, these disciplines.
Yes.
What if somebody comes in with something that doesn't quite fit with those? But it's more due in part to or not being aware of that particular discipline? Could we bend a bit on this?
They can, they can send an email to the match board email address asking for clarification perhaps? Or, I mean.
I think actually, actually in the application, I'm going to click over to that really quickly and go back to the first page. I do believe that we actually made it so that you could select other. Yeah.
Okay.
So there is some, some openness there to new disciplines that we may not have understanding of yet. Great question. Okay, so I'm going to scroll down here to collaborating with the city. And what we're recommending here is that really if folks are thinking about doing things in public spaces, using parks or city buildings, that they just go ahead and talk to the city events coordinator first before they submit this application and talk about what it would take for them to do what they're interested in. Just making sure that you understand what's involved in what you're proposing so that it doesn't get funded and then you find out that it perhaps isn't even possible. So really just looking for a little bit of foresight there and getting the collaboration started. And also, we're also suggesting that folks think about what kind of insurance that they will need for this as well. Here we do have a little. Yes, yes.
I'm sorry, I just kind of noticed in the time we've been doing this, the city's domain has, has changed. It's no longer coms.gov.
Okay.
It's whatever it is. We don't have to discuss it now, but we should just make sure we have the right email address.
Great, so get new email for Megan. Yeah, thank you. We'll, we'll tweak that. Again, we, we explain here about the anti-discrimination statement that we're requesting. And then we go into some detail here about what work samples might look like. And, and basically that we're just asking for anyone who's submitting to, to, to not expect that the board is aware of them and what their work is, but to, to submit information that provides that. Even if they have a stellar reputation, we may not all be aware of what that is. There's a note here that applications do become public information because they're sent to the city. So please be aware of that. And then we have some info on what the fiscal agency or pass through relationship might look like. Detailing that. Do we have any specific questions there? Okay. Yes. You're on mute, Michael.
Sorry, thanks, Sarah. Not, could you go up, up again? I'm curious about this public information. Okay. Your application will become public information. We've kind of discussed this in the past. I'm curious if we're going to have all of you. We will have all of the applications open to the public. I'm curious, are we going to blackout their addresses, their phone numbers, anything like that? Or is everything going out into the public?
Maybe somebody from the city could answer that.
I.
Rebecca?
Okay, I'll double check with our city clerk. She's our expert on what has to be out there and what, what we can, you know, blackout, you know, redact. So I'll have to come back to you with that information, but I will send it out as a blind copy to everyone and then we can go in and change the FAQ to match whatever it is that Judy tells me.
Great.
Before a, a point of comparison, each of us when we applied to be on the board, all our information was public.
Even phone numbers?
Yep. Everything, everything we put down on the application was, it was just kind of scanned and was part of the packet.
That may not have been intentional, Neil.
Okay, well, all right.
I, I'm sorry, but it may not have been. I, I, I don't know the answer to be precise, but I don't know what other granting agencies do if they pub, you know, make stuff public or not. So that might be another point of comparison.
Okay, well, I'm happy to update the document as we get that information from the city clerk. So I'll be just waiting on that response. Thank you. At the beginning, Neil, we were going to say that this was going to be as, hopefully a learning experience for us too, right? As the board, this is our first, our first go around. So thanks for, thanks for that.
It, it does, it does help us when we see it again. You know, it jokes things that we had thought of and maybe we then forgot about it. So.
Yes.
All good inputs.
Yes. Okay. So when, when a project is selected for funding, you will hear back from the match board by mid-April, whether you received funding or not. We will include expectations in the confirmation email as well as the award amount. And in order to receive the funding, you will need to reply to the confirmation email and provide a copy of a W9 form. As well, after the project is completed, the, the board would like to receive a report that explains what happened. How did the project go? How was it what you expected? Was it not? How effective was it? And how was the funding used? So that would need to be submitted prior to the reporting deadline that we supply you with. And basically the idea is that we're open to funding artists, nonprofits in subsequent years as long as we have received, you know, will be willing to review a new application as long as we've received the report on your last project. So that's kind of the, the main idea there. So any more questions on FAQ?
Yeah, if it's okay, I have a quick question.
Yeah, Becca.
Hello, everyone, by the way. So on that reporting question, I know that the Office of Economic Development at the state will be very interested in hearing, at least from the creative district in terms of those economic reports and accountability to the community. So I'm just sort of wondering on the reporting side if, if and when that will also be released to the public.
Don't know.
I would, I would think for transparency sake, it should be. So, so people can see how sales tax was spent and what the results were from it. It would seem like it, it should be a part of the, what's available for the public.
I, I have a couple of questions too.
All right, let's do it.
Okay, so the first one is how much do you suggest folks ask for, for this first round? Like, what do you think would be the max that you all would feel comfortable?
So we're not making recommendations like that at this time, but that what we do say up here higher in the app, sorry for the scrolling, is that we expect for the total funding for this year that's available to be forty thousand dollars.
Okay, and they'll just self, okay. And then.
Yeah.
To this too, but it's okay to pay yourself, correct?
Yeah, it just needs to be outlined.
Like if I were an artist applying in the budget, it'd be okay to pay myself for my work?
Yes.
And then I just have one more question is, sometimes I know when you receive a grant, you have to put, you have to use the match logo or thank them in any promotional sort of materials that you would use to talk about what you're doing. Are there any requirements for that? to talk about what you're doing. Are there any requirements for that?
That's a great question.
Could I address this? Neil?
Yeah, please.
Okay, I brought this up briefly. I think it might have been our first or second meeting. That I think we need to develop a specific logo for match that also mirrors the Manitou Springs logo or identifier, however you want to call them. But I, I think on all the pages dealing with match, we should have a very specific match oriented logo. So everywhere somebody looks regarding match, they will see that logo and they will know that these funds came from match. But also incorporate the Manitou Springs logo.
It sounds to me like this is possibly something that the match board needs to discuss and address in the FAQs in the future and maybe also get back to you about that Natalie. It's a really good question.
Yeah, because I think it goes back to that, you know, folks want to know what match is paying for, so anyway. I appreciate it. Those were my questions. Thank you very much.
It's like road, you know, you know, construction projects, your tax dollars paid for this bridge.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's really good and, and a gap. And I do actually recall Michael bringing that up.
Can I, this is Denise, can I just ask, as you do that, will you please work with Alex, our PIO?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I can send Alex an email tomorrow about maybe how would we come up with a, how would the match board come up with a an icon or emblem that would stand for the match funds? And then get back to you.
Okay. I'll do a couple of designs, Becca, and I'll send them out to you next week.
All right.
Just, you know, something, something to start with.
Great, thanks, Michael.
Anytime.
Okay, I think we could probably move on or that any more questions? The questions have been really good.
Thank you so much.
Could I ask a question of Natalie and Becca, since I think they're the only two participants? How, you've asked some very good questions, but since both of you do a lot of grant writing, is, how does this seem so far?
I think it's great. I mean, I don't think it's, I think, yeah, I think it's great.
It looks really strong to me. I think some of my questions are about regionality and where we're drawing the line for Manitou, because I know, and granted, my perspective is, it shifted a little bit, so I, I do wonder if we're looking at, you know, what, what are we defining as what's in Manitou? And we do have, you know, that eastern side that abuts old Colorado City and certainly is looking for some development.
Yeah, I think right now with the eligibility criteria, we're really talking about within the city of Manitou Springs. And I would say that whatever those physical boundaries are considered, that, that that's what we're looking at at this time. That's what we have voted on and have gotten city council approval on.
Yeah, I can't imagine going outside, given that's where the tax dollars are originating.
Now, to address what Becca just brought up, yes, we are, we are restricting it to events, exhibitions, performances to be done in Manitou Springs. But if you go back through some of the criteria, we can have people from outside of the Springs, but they have to use a Manitou Springs pass through. And the work has to be done in Manitou Springs.
And at the risk of sounding overly concerned about the technology aspects of this, I guess one of my questions would be, given some of the constraints we've all run up against in a COVID environment, are you then saying that if it's something that is dedicated to a Manitou audience but is being broadcast elsewhere? Does that somehow create a boundary or conflict that wouldn't allow that project to be funded?
Yeah. I think, I think if the fiscal sponsor may have an issue with sponsoring something that didn't have at least a connection. I, you know, it's going to be impossible to put this all into a box, but you know, a virtual program, but you kind of need to have some kind of Manitou connection, is my view. Whoever is sharing, your battery is about to run out.
That's me.
I just saw that.
I had to buy a new charger today. Thank you.
But yeah, Becca, again, I think we're going to be reasonable. But if someone's doing a program about Denver architecture, you know, I'm not sure that's going to fly.
Sorry, I'm having trouble unmuting. I think if I have any sort of guidance to offer particular to that, I would encourage you to think about what those boundaries look like for some sort of digital offering that might not necessarily fall within city parameters necessarily.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, I'm going to stop screen sharing now.
Okay, thank you, Sarah.
Thank you so much.
I will resume, okay? So how are we going to rate? Oops. So we have agreed upon a point, this distribution, and we have agreed upon major rating categories. The first category is, did you submit everything that you were meant to? The second category is really around the quality of the budget request. Was it an appropriate level of detail? Was there an adequate amount of information shared that we could form an assessment? You know, if you just had budget $5,000 and that was it, probably not very good quality, right? But there again, it's, it's a balance. The second category is alignment with our community and, and the plan Manitou, master plan values. How does it fit? And frankly, that's, that's where the virtual program is probably going to fit in as well. There, there needs to be a connection there. The fourth is really, is it a good project? Merit of the project. And so we call that the impact. Is it a great project or is it not a great project? And so that's, as I said, really an assessment of the project. The fifth one is, is the project team that's going to be responsible for delivery? Do they have experience and expertise? Do they give us confidence that they can actually execute it? You know, and my guidance is, is if you've never done this before, find someone who has done it before to help you. Because, you know, at the end of the day, as Sarah mentioned, there will be a, a report expected. And, you know, a a report that shows that you did largely what you expected to or even exceeded, you know, is going to be much better than the opposite. We're still kind of working on, within each of these categories, how we would assign the points. So when we actually do our rating, we'll have some indicators that would help us separate an eight from a six from a two. But we're not ready to share those yet. But that will help us, you know, calibrate amongst ourselves. So we have some degree of consistency in approach. So thirty-six points will be the maximum. And the minimum would be zero. In theory, I'm not expecting many zeros, I might add. Any questions on that? And again, I think Natalie and Becca, you've done this a lot. Do these kind of makes sense to you?
Um, I think it does. I think, um, maybe. Yeah, I think it does. I mean, I feel like some, at some point, maybe it's over time, it might be weighted a little differently. Like, I'm wondering if the impact might be more important than the way the budget looks. But I, I think this is a great way to jump off with things, because I'm not quite sure how it is going to all play out.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good sort of lead in. I think we all expect come next April, May, we'll be doing a second iteration of this. Because we, there's a lot, we're just having to kind of, of guess at a bit and get a cycle under our belt. But yeah, I, I, we'll see where it goes.
And I so fully appreciate the amount of work it must have taken to develop a rubric like this to help guide your decision making. So well done. I'm sure this, this really represents a good deal of conversation and thoughtfulness. And I guess my question, because it's always about how do we show accountability and really help tell the story of Manitou? Is, how are you measuring impact and what does that mean?
Yeah, so I don't have it here, but each of these has, each of these main categories has a breakdown of how, what a two is versus what a four or a six or an eight is. But we haven't finalized that language yet. We probably won't do that until January. Because we need to address some issues with the tier one applications first. But we will have guidance that we certainly use as a board to give each application a score.
And Neil, can I?
Is that the Ouija board?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Neil, this is Nancy. Yeah, to Becca's point, Becca, the board, you're, I, I appreciate your recognition of the tremendous effort that the board has put into this so far. One thing that they haven't really had much of an opportunity to discuss to date are larger strategic goals for match. But Neil, I think one thing that you guys have discussed is that you try to make it fairly, the whole thing fairly simple so that people who haven't applied a lot can apply without too much angst and stress. Am I correct in that?
Well, I think so. I mean, I hadn't written a grant till the first one I did two, two years ago, and it's quite a discovery. And I got, and on that one, I got actually, you know, lucky, it was actually accepted. But again, that's why I think it's good to have someone who maybe has some experience to help you doing this on your own. And it, you know, so I think Natalie and Becca, you're probably going to hear about a lot of these. Just try and encourage people or hook them up with someone who knows what they're doing. We don't want this to give people heart attacks or anything. It is not intended that way. And I know people sometimes have a hard time getting their thoughts, you know, into the written word or into a budget. But there's lots of people in town who can help them. They're just going to ask someone, but not someone on the match board. Okay. We've all agreed as a board that we're not going to participate in any applications. Even though some of us are on 501(c) boards, we're going to separate ourselves from the actual application and not, and not coach people.
I, I think oddly enough, due to COVID, our artists have gotten pretty good at, at writing grants, so it's a moment in time. But I think that I'll talk to Becca, but I could see like through Manitou Made or something, maybe even offering some programs or stuff where folks could get together and work on their budget together.
We do have an email address, okay? And Becca monitors this. We actually had our first email this week or late last week, which was a great email, I might add. But this is where people, if they, if they're having an impossible time understanding something, this is at least a contact point. But again, I think there's enough experience in town that they can help people through their questions without having to submit an email. Any final thoughts or comments? I, I actually do have to go help out in a second here. But I think it's, it's about as simple as we can make it, I think. And to Nancy's point, we've been, I think, meeting twice a month since July, was it? That we started or I forget now. And, you know, we will, will be meeting twice in January and probably in February and probably in March, just because the stuff that we have to do. And this is a very motivated and capable group of people that we have here. And very, and very diverse. We have some very lively conversations. Okay. I think if that's it, guys, I'm just going to give people a final chance. Any other board members have a comment to make?
We just had a new person join the screen, Marisha Cook, is that correct, Marisha?
Oh, yeah, so that's, that's the person who was on earlier, I think. Marisha?
Hi, it's Marcia. And yes, I was just listening in. I am working with.
We actually were hearing your previous conference call.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For about, you know, twenty minutes. So just, luckily it wasn't terribly confidential, but you know, just be, be mindful in this Zoom, you know, world that we can unintentionally let other people hear what you don't want them to hear.
Right.
Okay, good. Well, thank you for joining us.
Neil, may I make a comment?
Yeah.
I just want to say you guys are rocking it and thank you. I mean, this is amazing what you've put together in a short amount of time and how professional it is. So I just want to recognize the board for all that you're doing and you're taking the time to educate and to answer questions and provide the customer service. So thank you.
Well, thank you. Anna or Sarah, have we kind of captured the kind of three or four questions that we will need to follow up on? I actually was not making, making notes.
Unfortunately, neither was I this time, but I'll recall the questions and write them down.
I, I took some, some notes.
Okay, awesome. If you, if you could maybe just kind of summarize those and there's a couple that are time sensitive because they pertain to the application. And there's a couple that we can maybe pick up on in January, but because I really want next week to be about the tier ones as much as possible.
My main question, I think, is what on the on the information on the application can be redacted and what's going to be made public? So, and I'm going to ask Judy, the city clerk, tomorrow about that. Because we might want to, you might want to put that onto the application. What won't be included in the public information?
Becca, I'm willing to help you with that, too.
Oh, thank you. Well, I'm just going to, Judy's our expert, so I'm going to send a email to her and ask her, what can we redact on the, on these forms?
Um, and Becca, as you answered Becca's question about the impacts, the economic impacts of this grant money going into our community so that the creative district can then capture that for us, again, for its own purposes, obviously, is on that board, too. I, I'm queuing into that with Becca, that I think that's important. And so your answer at the time was you thought that would be transparent also, but I'd like clarification on that.
Yeah, we will, we will address that in a future match, match meeting, but I would certainly expect at the end of next year that we have all of our reports. And it might even be part of next year's application. I don't know yet, but it seems like a reasonable thing to share you know, with people. This is, this is what was done with the match proceeds. Okay, I need to go, guys. Thank you.
I have a super quick question.
Yeah.
Can we promote this like crazy? Is that, do we have permission?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Please.
Yeah, we want really cool projects to happen.
Yeah. We do.
And younger artists.
Yeah. And some high school kids. Would be nice. All right. I'm leaving. I'll see you, guys. Thank you. Bye. Cheers.